Oh, call this meeting to order. For the city council here on our capital improvements meeting along with the citizens planning commission. Well, just because I know what time is, we're going to move forward. Clerk, I'll just ask that you make note of the council members that are here and in attendance, and we have two that have called in or excused. Councilman Michelangelo and Councilwoman Vining are excused. I believe all members of the members are here this evening. And Councilman Felder, I know that he'll be attending, but I know he's probably delayed. So, otherwise, I think we're good for the council. I don't know if you note the Chairperson Swirch from the citizens planning commission. I just have those that are here.
Thank you.
Tell the clerk.
Did she get the call?
No, I don't think we need to roll. Just make note of those that are here.
On the roll call sheet.
Well, thank you. I appreciate everyone being here tonight to, you know, review the proposed capital improvements program. And, you know, I think as we go through it, one of the things I really want to impart, not only on, you know, the citizens planning commission, but also the city council, is we're kind of at a very critical juncture in our history. And some of it's related with some of the capital improvement programs, projects that we have proposed this year, but also kind of set the stage for what we may have to consider over the next couple of decades. And so, with that, I'm going to start off with Jeff giving kind of a brief introduction about the capital improvements program and some critical aspects of it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Pastu, Jeffrey Green, Director of Community Development. It's kind of a milestone. This is actually my 25th capital improvements budget here at the city of Monroe. So, I've been doing these for a while, and it actually was one of the first major projects that I took on when I came to the city in the planning department. And oftentimes, the question of what exactly is the capital improvements budget? Why do we do it and all those things comes up, and actually, the reason why Mr. Pastu asked me to talk a little bit about that tonight. The capital improvements program budget is a multi-year schedule of public improvements, usually five or six years in length. And regardless of the community size, the CIP process is relatively similar, community to community. Those that participate and have a CIP budget typically do things the same way, and generally, the idea is to create a budget for this upcoming year, but as well as planning and looking at the future. And the capital improvements program budget is actually made up of two components. The capital budget, which covers the first year of the program and includes all of the capital projects to be funded by the governing body in the upcoming year or fiscal year, and then the capital improvements program covering the remaining five years. So, this creates a six-year CIP program in total, and the remaining five years really provide a snapshot of projects that departments and agencies that receive funding are recommending for upcoming years, so that you as planning commissioners, you as city council, have a better idea of how to allocate funds and what to be expecting in the upcoming five, six, seven years. Annual CIP expenditures, those which are part of the capital budget, this year's budget, should be tied to the comprehensive or the master plan. We currently call our master plan the comprehensive plan, and these change every so often as the state enabling legislation changes. And so, it should be tied to that, and every project request should evolve from this plan, if at all possible. Now, one of the questions on the project information sheets that we send out to the various departments every year when we start this process is requesting that, and those departments that are requesting funding, is whether the project complies with the city's comprehensive plan. And it's here that the department demonstrates how each project relates. The question is sometimes asked why the planning commission is involved in the budgeting process at all, and why it must make a recommendation to the city council. It's mandated by the state enabling legislation, and it's also required by our city charter. So, almost without exception, there are always requests, more requests for funding than funds available, hence the need for a capital improvements program budget. The city of Monroe has traditionally spent approximately $1 mil of general fund dollars toward the capital budget, plus all of the other funding sources that make that up and make up the larger budget. And the manager will provide his recommendations for funding for the upcoming year in the next presentation. And there really are benefits for going through this process and establishing an annual capital improvements program budget. This is really, most people think of it as a fiscal kind of budgeting exercise, but really, it's also a planning exercise, because it's looking at where allocations are going to go, what parts of the city they will go, what kind of, again, capital improvements will be made throughout the city. So, the benefits that run for, going through this process and establishing a capital improvements budget, the benefits are, the CIP can ensure that plans for community facilities are carried out. It can allow for improvement proposals to be tested against a set of policies. It can better schedule public improvements that require more than one year to construct. It can improve an opportunity, assuming funds are available, to purchase land before costs go up. It can provide an opportunity for long-range financial planning and management. It can stabilize tax rates through careful debt management. It can avoid such mismanagement as paving a street one year and tearing it up the next to build a sewer. It can offer an opportunity for citizens and public interest groups to participate in decision-making, and it can contribute to a better overall management of city affairs. The city's process began in September of this year, a little bit earlier than we normally do, but again, and as request forums went out to the various departments, the various agencies, administrators that make requests through the capital, for capital budget dollars and make requests through the CIP. Once the funding requests are returned to the CIP budget team, the team begins meeting to review those initial requests, and then meets with the various department administrators and agencies that had made those requests. At these meetings, the budget team and the department head and the administrators discuss the projects, discuss potential funding, and often what projects are realistic for the upcoming year. A draft CIP budget is then assembled and presented at a joint session of the city council and the CPC, which is where we are this evening. And I see by the slide that next steps is at the bottom, so with that, we've kind of got us to this point tonight. I will turn it over to Mr. Pastu to talk a little bit about the upcoming budget for this upcoming year, and then we will be back to talk a little bit about what the next steps are. Mr. Pastu.
Thank you, Jeff. So, one of the things I wanted to go through, and Jeff kind of hit on a number of them, but I just think they're important to reiterate, but also some of the environmental factors that we're confronted with. So, you know, I'll go through a number of factors that we contemplate in looking at projects and looking long-term with the community, and some of the challenges that we have. And I broke them down into seven different elements, you know, in consideration, and I'll go through each of these fairly quickly. You know, one of the financial factors, and it's, you know, the elephant in the room now is the DTE valuation that's out there. And actually, in some ways, there's two components to it. I think first and foremost, we know it's about 48% of our tax base. This last year, they wrote $8.4 million in city millages and the 1% administration fee for that. We collected over $26 million from them, and as you know, they're contesting their, the valuation of their plant. And so, we have to be cognizant of that effect. The other part of it is, is for this purpose, we've reduced their valuation by 25%, I think, to be conservative in the sense, and so, as Mr. Green alluded, we roughly would appropriate about $1 mil, generating about $1 million. And so, as a result, working with Finance Director, Assistant Manager Ed Sell, we knocked that down about $125,000 from what we historically have done, and use that going forward with the projection. The other thing with it, it's very important to keep in mind, and you can see what I have in bold at the top, is the plant itself is going to be decommissioned in the next 20 years. And so, we really have 20 years to try and get our infrastructure in a good condition. So, once the plant is decommissioned and the tax base is no longer there and available, that we have at least got a lot of our infrastructure in place in a sustainable manner, as well as our city services, which I'll talk with council about here over the next couple of months. But we do need to address and consider that going forward, which is in part because, as Mr. Green mentioned, this is a planning document. It's a planning exercise, if you will, and really, thinking about the next 20 years is important, not only obviously for the city council, but the planning, citizens planning commission as well. The other things that we're looking at on the horizon is the state of Michigan through the estimate from the citizens research council of Michigan is, they're looking at between a $2 billion and $4 billion shortfall in the next three years. They have a $10 billion budget, so pretty sizable amount, and it affects us in two different ways, potentially. One is, historically, cities have always, when the state has to balance their budget, have used the revenue sharing, the discretionary revenue sharing component as a means to reduce that, which will impact our ability to continue our general fund appropriation for capital. We've already looked at cutting it as a result of the DTE. And then the second part is, the state general fund, as a result of a couple of years ago when they changed the funding, is a portion of the money that comes for Act 51, which is the revenues for road that we receive here at the city, is coming out of their general fund, which means they probably will alter the road funding that we receive, which has also been a component of the city's financing for different road improvements. And so, you know, we're looking at that on the horizon, as well as the continued reduction of state and federal grants, particularly with CDBG, although we don't have any of the numbers here, but I've looked at the charts over the years, how that's declined substantially in the last 10 years, and then some of the road urban aid projects that are out there and available. We anticipate, and that probably has declined as well over the last decade. The second factor we looked at was certainly economic, and this is kind of the good news story and part of the balancing that we have to do with the financial reality that we know that's out there. But clearly, you know, the recommendation, make land use and capital improvements decision that will allow the city to harness the current momentum of economic opportunity. You know, I'm very optimistic with where we are from a logistics standpoint, you know, with the construction of the Gordy Howe Bridge, probably about four years away, and it's projected to open in 2022. It will really create a great economic boom for this area, I think, in particular with the transportation coming from Canadian goods and products both directions. And certainly, the Monroe County link, partnership with, through the county and Monroe Business Development Corporation and other local governments, I think some of the implementation of that program will help immensely with it. And we've got certainly the Port of Monroe as a great asset, and then the rail system that services our community. So, I think in a lot of ways, we've got, we're positioned very, very well for what we anticipate as an opening of, an expansion of trade along 75 and all of the other transportation facilities that we have. Very optimistic, certainly with the numbers increasing with the River Raisin National Battlefield Park. I think it provides a balance and another opportunity from an economic development standpoint, and certainly, as we do some of our capital improvements programming, keeping that in mind. But it does provide a good balance, and it's also got a benefit by bringing outsiders into our community that may utilize downtown restaurants and retail operations to expand upon just serving the immediate community. We have socially a resurgence of downtowns everywhere. We've got a wonderful set of assets here in Monroe, and we're seeing continual redevelopment of that. And I think, again, just in a general sense, historic assets, think in terms, you know, historic preservation is an economic development tool. And so, a lot of the things that the citizens planning commission can influence with zoning regulations and site plan reviews can go a long way toward, you know, benefiting and preserving our historic assets, so. Quality of life factors, as I said, building upon our unique historic assets, certainly the River Raisin, its natural beauty and recreational opportunities that it presents. Build upon the social trend, as I said, cities are cool again. We got a combination of historic downtown, historic neighborhoods, and yet, we still have the small-town charm that others can't offer. We certainly look at recommending investment more in walkable communities, streetscape, traffic calming improvements. And I put that in there, I'll talk a little bit about it when I get to the DDA piece, and then certainly invest in park improvements. But part of it is, is, you know, we're now in the business of not chasing businesses, but talent. And I think, in a sense, to keep our own residents here and allow them to benefit, but also to attract talent. You know, I think when we look at one of the largest employers here, the La-Z-Boy facility was primarily a decision to attract and retain talent that their corporate needs required. And so, we're in many ways kind of a different type of economic development, where we're trying to chase talent, and part of it is, is you got to have a reason for somebody to want to live here. And one of the quotes of my transmittal letter, and I've always struggled with it wherever I've been, but we are a lot more than just another nowhere Midwest city just off the freeway. We have a lot to offer. And so, I think in the good news standpoint, certainly with the quality of life, we can, you know, build upon what we have and take advantage of it. Operational factors, it drives home greater consideration, giving operating cost. The mayor and I were talking earlier today, and certainly, he's involved with SEMCOG as the president this year, but one of the things with the TAP grant is that you have to have a maintenance program. So, if you build it, how are you going to take care of it? Do you have the resources? Critical for us, and I think from a management standpoint, we will continue to drive that home. And then if there's other alternatives needed to do the ongoing maintenance, keep those in mind as well. You know, part of it is, again, this is just touting our engineering department and utilities department with the professional assessment that goes into putting projects together. It is mandated that the water and sewer system do asset management program to assess our infrastructure needs. It's a systematic process. I think many of you are familiar with the engineering department's annual road street condition evaluation, and certainly, there's a sidewalk evaluation that's part of what drives capital improvement needs as well. But it's an important tool for a couple of reasons. It prioritizes projects, I think, trying to remember one of Patrick's comments, well, whether to reconstruct or to do capital maintenance. And that really helps us in prioritizing where we can extend the life of an asset, rather than just go through the expensive process of replacing it. And then, as Mr. Green alluded to, certainly, the coordination involves, you don't want to be doing a surface improvement for a road and then ripping it up within a couple of years to do some underground utility work as well. So, the fact that we have these systems in place, I hope lends confidence to the council, planning commission, and residents, that there is a lot of thought that goes into these projects. Regulatory factors, and it's primarily in the utilities department, but the water system, I think, you know, certainly, the regulatory concerns at the state and federal level with lead regulations. We're anticipating that there'll be some legislation out of Lansing and possibly some EPA regulations in 2008 later this year. And our sewer system, their NPDS permit, which provides them the operation approval that they need, is currently under review. There's dialogue with the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. And the significance of it is, and this is kind of going to tie in, we're still waiting to see where it goes. We don't have anything specifically in here, but I think after, later this year, when we probably come back next year, we'll probably have a much better idea how we're going to approach some of these items. And so, there's nothing in there, but you hear, there's a lot of media coverage and conversations with these things. Don't think that we forgot. We just need to know what regulations exist in order to plan appropriately for those future improvements. There will be in future improvement, we're just not sure to what magnitude, so. And then the last part of it is just technology factors. Certainly, our desire is to continue to improve operational efficiency, customer experience and systems reliability. We just completed a technology study, and a lot of, one of the things that we're looking at is how to improve process management and workflow systems to achieve greater effectiveness and efficiency, all of the things in number one. But also numerous applications, I think, certainly in the utilities department, we're seeing more and more of those related to system reliability, system monitoring, and even customer interaction that will be taking place. So, that's the background with this. I want to move quickly into some of the departmental projects that we have out there. I'm going to do a quick review of some of the non-engineering and utilities, and then afterwards, we'll have Patrick and Barry do a quick summary of what they have out there available. Community development department, we've got two items out there, $50,000 for strategic property acquisitions. We have been acquiring mostly through the county treasurer, land bank, properties that are delinquent tax foreclosures, but they're also blighted properties in general. And so, part of what we're looking at is being able to have the resources in place to take advantage when those opportunities arise. In a lot of cases, they're not all that, in many cases, it's just paying the delinquent taxes on that. I think the significance of it is, is that, you know, again, one of the things, blight abatement is an economic development initiative, and so, where we can acquire some of these blighted properties, it will help, I think, with some of the renovation and, I should say, with the redevelopment of our community and neighborhoods. City facilities, just put 25, I don't have anything particularly in mind, but I think every year, we need to do some improvements at different facilities, and that's a pretty modest amount. And I know this year, I'll talk a little bit in another slide here about some, maybe some improvements for the Sawyer House Communications. We completed a branding study, and we're in the process of rolling that out. One of the things that we see, $50,000 implementation, we proposed $50,000 for fiscal year, 18, 19, and another $50,000. Most of that's going to be gateway signs, wayfinding signs, those type of things to change out. I think for the most part, we're probably looking at park signs as part of projects, but we may find our way into some of that as well. But we think it's, you've seen some, you know, certainly with some of our vehicles, that implementation, and I think, you know, we're looking to expand upon it to some of our gateway signs and wayfinding. The downtown development authority has only one project right now, the Riverwalk Lighting and Security, clearly a wonderful asset that they feel they need to expand upon. The source of funding on that is still to be discussed a little further, whether they can pay for a lot of it with cash and/or if they may end up doing some sort of debt obligation for it. Like the piece with the regulatory aspect, the DDA is in the process of finishing up their master plan. I certainly anticipate, when you get the capital improvements program for next year, you'll see a lot more projects. But at this point in time, they're still going to be finishing that up probably into early 2018, probably March or there, we'll have a better idea. Fire department, a couple of items. We have $75,000 in appropriations for the replacement of fire engine number two. Preceding this, we've put $125,000 the prior two fiscal years toward replacement, and then are looking to sell three different apparatus pieces to finance the balance of a purchase that is approximately $475,000. We may have to come back if we're a little bit short, but we think, given the resale value of some of the apparatus, that we should be fine with this last appropriation. Construction, although it's not in your capital improvements budget, it has to be mentioned. Certainly, we've got $6 million out there. We're moving along with the process at this point, kind of almost going from schematic design. We're not completed necessarily with that, but certainly into the design development, we're hopeful that that can start the process early, later this year, late spring, early summer with that. But there's $6 million out there for that. From a technology standpoint, just from a general appropriation, some laser fiche forms related to some of our process improvement that'll come out of our IT fund with that. And then parks and recreation, we have only one project proposed for fiscal year 18, 19, and that's Labor Park Improvements. They just, the Parks Department just completed a Parks Plan for six different parks, and we'll look at starting with Labor Park. One of the reasons we start, predict, you know, we decided to start with Labor Park is fairly simple, and it's also utilizing a good portion of it with CDBG funds. We're looking to spread that out, the CDBG funds over a couple of fiscal years, and then looking at a general fund appropriation of $229,000, $100 this year. Arthur Lesau Community Center, we did receive four requests, and some of them, they're fairly small, and basically, I recommend that we didn't fund them this point in time, but to focus on the 2018 projects that we have out there that were funded with the past capital improvements, one being the kitchen renovation, and the second, obviously, as I mentioned, with Labor Park. Those are a couple of big improvements. And the kitchen renovation itself, utilizing CDBG money, we kind of got a late approval, if you will, from HUD for this, so we've been sitting on this for several months, but just the last month, we gave the, we got the go-ahead and signed off for, to move forward with this. And internally, we're now going to initiate the process to start these two projects, so. From city facilities, just run through these fairly quickly. With city hall, we had programmed to do a pretty significant renovation of the council chambers, and then when the DTE project came up, decided to put that on hold, particularly since it brought into question our ability to finance the new fire station. We subsequently resolved that for my end of it, because there was, the funding was a separate, entirely different set of funds that were available for this room, but I thought the optics were kind of bad if you put the hold on the fire station but decide to do your city hall. And so, once we get the fire station rolling, which seems to be moving good, then we'll come back to the city council about carrying forward with that. Police station, I will tell you, and this goes back to the context of trying to do this within the next 20 years while the plant is still there, you know, with the Lincoln School site where the fire station is, we have some conceptual plans for eventually looking to add the police station there. We have an arrangement that the county, and we've been there for a better part of 40 years, but I think eventually, we need to somehow come to grips with how we're going to get the police station onto the Lincoln School site adjoining the fire station. And part of it is, if you don't do it in the next 20 years, I'm not sure when you're going to be able to do it, and so, I think it's important to keep that in there. The fire station I mentioned, we've got the West Station, we've got some improvements that we programmed, came in a little over budget, and then with the DTE uncertainty there for a while, we put that on hold. I think we'll probably go back out here in the spring and get that project moving again. The ALCC, the Arthur Lesau Community Center, I talked a little bit about. We've done a number of improvements over the last decade there. And then the Monroe Multi-Sports Complex, we're currently working with the National Battlefield Foundation, related to their space analysis. The plan is to have them occupy a portion of that, but also working in conjunction with our Parks and Recreation Department for other use there as well. They're still working on that with our consultants, and I think we got another meeting later this month to go over their latest update. Sawyer House, I put that out there, it is city-owned, probably need for some modest improvements, and that's part of where some of that $25,000 I put, I recommended out there. And then, obviously, the Dorsh Library, we've had the challenge with the entry into the library there, the vestibule, the pricing comes pretty, a lot higher than what we anticipated, and we were using CDBG funds with that. So, with that, it's kind of a quick overlay, overview of where we're at with the background related to this, and then also where we are with some of our other city infrastructure. But again, if there's anything I can impart on you is, one, we're kind of at a very, very good point with some economic opportunity, but we certainly have challenges and keep in mind with, we got to do this in the next 20 years. And actually, I'm kind of jumping ahead of myself, because I actually got a couple more slides. I was about ready to turn it over to Patrick. And I'll kick off the first part with the engineering department, and in part because I want to drive home the road funding. I've got nine different components of it, of which, not road, but just transportation in general. And I think, you know, it's kind of one of those divide and conquer approaches. We've got streets based on the money that we receive from MDOT that are classified as major streets, pretty much collectors, arterials. Major streets eligible for federal funding aid, Patrick will talk about. Patrick will talk about project on front this year and the next couple of years. We got the state trunk line, which is going to be Telegraph, Monroe, M50, West of Telegraph that fit that. And then the city bridges, the residents of Haxbayers voted a .52 millage levy to address three of our bridges that we have here in the community. The significance of all of that, again, taking a divide and conquer approach is, our sense of is, they're in good condition, and they are financially sustainable based on the formula that we received from MDOT. And, you know, we may have a little bit of concern about the federal aid, and then they've done a lot of improvements on the trunk lines, but in general, those portions of it, I feel pretty good that we can sustain what we have for quite a while. We're still going to have to continue ongoing investment, but the resources to do that are available. The second, well, the second portion of it is the sidewalk, the residential streets and sidewalks. I'll be honest with you, we just don't have the resources to do the replacement that we need to for these, particularly for our residential streets. We've got $150,000 budgeted for sidewalks. We probably should do at a minimum quarter million dollars every year. And where I go with this, and again, I'm going to throw this out there, there's no need for any immediate action, but just more food for thought, is that if we got the plant for another 20 years, and you got to hit that, you might want to consider some sort of dedicated millage levy that would be specifically for residential streets and sidewalks. I just don't see how, any way that we can sustain enough funding to stay on top of, you know, the really, in some cases, very poor quality of streets. And when you see some of the ones that Patrick will show you in just a couple of minutes, you can, we'll just be, I'm just being candid, we're just not going to stay on top of it. The current funding system is just not adequate for that, particularly in light of what we're confronted with in the general fund. I throw out alleys, just to keep in mind, nothing specific, but I think more as urban living is becoming back in vogue, that the use of alleys and their functionality will probably take a greater importance, and at some point, maybe we contemplate a plan or a mechanism for getting those alleys paved. I do think that in future years, you'll see a lot more prominence in their use, and certainly help, I think, in adding value if they're functional and their appearance is good, and also reduce your on-street parking if used properly. Patrick's going to talk a little bit about the industrial park, big project, and we don't have enough funding for it. But I put it in here to drive home a point, is that if we're going to position ourselves to be attractive for this upcoming opportunity for logistics, we got to do a little better job than what we have out there to address the industrial park and its condition. And then the last, again, Patrick will talk a little bit about St. Mary's Garden, Stormsour. We have some funding in there to finish up some design, but again, it's a big project that ultimately is going to need some, more than likely, a combination of city resources and special assessments to complete the project, so. I know I went through that fairly quickly. If there's any questions, be more than happy to take those. If not, we can move on to Patrick. Yes?
Did I understand with the Arthur Community Center, we're going to be able to do the kitchen?
Yes.
Finally?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep, finally. Yeah, we, we met with them, actually. Mark and I met with them probably back in June, and we just got, finally got the approval from HUD that we can-
I served 12 years on that board, and it was, every year, we'll get something, we'll get something.
Yeah. Yeah, we're ready to move on now. Funding's in place.
You're talking about millager levy for sidewalks/streets. Do you have some kind of figure in mind?
No, I don't. I think if we're, I just wanted to drop the hint, and I think we probably need to talk about that further. But if we do that, and it obviously will involve a sales pitch to the broader community, you know, I'd certainly look at Patrick, and we'd probably develop a list of projects that would take place immediately, and then, you know, what we would do long-term to address some of the other projects that we know that are out there. But I'm guessing probably a mill somewhere in that neighborhood to supplement that.
Do you have an idea what kind of shortfall you think of for every year?
You know, we probably could put about a million bucks into it, and I think it would make enough difference to, at the end of the 20-year period, to have our residential streets, because some of them are going to require complete reconstruction, because if you don't do it in the next 20 years, I'm not sure when you're going to have the opportunity to do that. And some of them, you know, you can, they've stood the test of time from a base quality that you can continue to do some mill and fill. And I think that's where we would say, look, this is how we envision all of these streets that are rated poorly, and Patrick's assessment, how we can put together a plan that would be reasonable. But I think, you know, we've been putting close to half million dollars a year for roads, another $400,000. This last year, we did quite a bit of work. We bonded some of the new money that we got from MDOT, which I'm now a little concerned that it'll be out there forever. And so, so we did over $2 million this last year. And I will tell you, you probably need to do close to $2 million a year anyways, just on residential streets. And again, the first part of it, the majors and, you know, the urban aid projects and the bridges, we're okay there. It's just, the residentials are the ones that, long-term, I just don't see a great funding mechanism to be able to really finally address it. And they're going to continue to deteriorate over additional time.
Some of those projects, we include the projects like, when Water does its project, Pat comes back and does the street.
Yep, and that's, there's a number of projects you'll see when you go through the listing, and even in the following year, we had a pretty good discussion about what Water Main Work needs to take place, one of the streets. We looked at and said, let's wait and see what the lead requirements are before we go in and do that street. And so, but yeah, Patrick and Barry and Ed get together and along with myself to make sure that there isn't any wasteful expenditures and that there is good coordination between the underground and surface-related work. Mayor?
Just a quick one on the community development side. I know you mentioned the Dorsh Library, and you know, last year, we ran into some challenges of getting that completed. It's not on the list, if I heard correctly, and we're looking at how we're going to, was funny, put aside from last year's move forward-
Well, we still have money in there. Yeah, we still have money in there, and obviously, it came in over our appropriations. We'll probably be bringing that back with something supplemental, probably more so in the CDBG area. Yep. Anything else? Patrick, you're up.
Honorable Mayor and Council and Planning Commissioners, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. Do my standard intro. I'll expound a little bit, if Mr. Pastu doesn't mind, on Councilman Lamore's question relative to the street millage. I think the speculation about a mill was correct. I actually did a very comprehensive hundred-and-some pages, if anyone would like to read it, back in 2006, and that was about the shortfall we had identified then, was roughly about a million, a little over a million dollars a year to get, to keep things on schedule. We've got an 83-mile street system, and so assuming a blended kind of 20-year replacement cycle, we've got about a third of our streets are concrete, which should have a longer lifespan, but two-thirds are asphalt. You should be looking at about four miles a year. That's what we should be doing. Last year, with the bond money we threw at it, which was pulling ahead five to six years of that additional Act 51 money, we still only got about three and a quarter miles done. So that gives you some sense of just how bad the local street situation is. So we made pretty good strides. We addressed a lot of latent deficiencies, but they just keep coming. And you watch the weather outside a day like today, and you see the potholes that are showing up on streets that are kind of marginal, and so unfortunately, that's about the number we'd be talking. I haven't reevaluated those numbers. I can tell you, the federal aid has dropped by about half from when that report was done. We used to get about $450,000 a year. We're down to about $225,000, both from more cities within the United States becoming eligible for that money and the money not growing. It's the same problem we have with the CDBG dollars. Not very much increasing pot, but a lot more people drawing from it. So with that, I'll get on to my piece of this, and I'll try to, I'll promise to go fast here with the understanding, if any of you have any questions on specific projects, I'll be happy to go back and discuss those. But I will say, you won't see a whole lot of good-looking streets on these pictures, so. Just, this is a summary, sorry, the font's a little small in this, tried to cram it all in here, but for streets this year, we've got only eight projects, which is down, I think we had 14 last year, and five, well, I'll call other infrastructure. And the eight projects with the 5.2 million, don't let that deceive you, a big chunk of that is around $2 million. That's in that Frenchtown Industrial Park development, which we're relying a great deal upon special assessment for. So lest you think we have more money than we really have here, there's quite a bit of that that goes into that. So there's eight different projects, and I'll detail those real quickly with their own slides. Five other infrastructure projects, about $900,000 for those. The criteria we use for selection obviously shouldn't surprise you. We start, start the streets with their block-by-block rating, and I'll get into that in a moment. We do combine those, like in other words, if there's one block that's really rough and then the rest of the street's good, we do try to wait a little bit until we get a little more meaningful project, just from a mobilization standpoint. We don't like to spend small chunks here because we waste a lot in contractor MOB and DMOB. We look at the traffic volumes, that goes back to the major streets there. They tend to get a little bit more favorable treatment, as you would expect. I mean, it's more important to resurface a Riverview than it would be a dead-end street with four houses on it. But at some point, you still have to do everything. We look at federal funds applicability, obviously. I mean, that's, we almost have two lists, the federally eligible list and everything else, because we can only use federal funds on those projects. So you'll see the corresponding, like, for example, a McComb Street wasn't in as bad condition as some of the other streets that we're considering for this year, but we already did McComb, and that's because federal funds can only be expended there. So we can keep those to a better standard. We look at repair and maintenance history. If it's a street we're filling a lot of potholes, we tend to favor that versus one that's just riding rough, because we got to spend more maintenance dollars on it. And then, of course, right off the bat, we coordinate the project locations with utilities because we do not want to have to tear those streets back up. So Barry and I have been doing that every year since 2005, 2004, but we didn't have control of the process then. And so I think we've done a pretty good job. Every so often, we'll have to dig up a sewer lead that the contractor blows through on a water job, and we will miss it. But other than that, we've had pretty good success with all that. I mentioned our total street mileage for this year, 1.32 miles is what we proposed in 2018, although that doesn't include the Frenchtown Industrial Park, because that's one where we think the special assessment process may not be completed in 2018. It's pretty complicated, and it's a lot of money. We were to get those projects done, it'd be another 1.35 miles if project dates completed. As I mentioned, 3.2 miles we did in 2017, but that required a whole lot of cash. You've heard me talk about the street program review. Those of you that have been on Planning Commission have heard this spiel a bunch of times. Council, I think, has heard it as well. But we, the Superintendent of Public Services and I drive every block of street pretty much every year. We did skip a little bit of that this year. We drove everything, kind of like the worst half, just because we were in a bit of a time crunch to get numbers to the city manager's office in September. So most years, we'll drive every block. This year, we drove every block. We've got complaints on or that we suspected was near the top. We rate the driving surface from zero, which is perfect, or a brand-new street, to 10, which is basically impassable. Fortunately, the only street we've got, which I'd call impassable, is Spalding Road, which, if any of you know where that is, good luck driving out there. That's the street that goes behind Ace Hardware on Dixie Highway. Technically, it's a right-of-way, but we can't even find where it really is anymore. So that would be an impassable road. And we look at the curbs with zero, a brand-new, to four, if they're lacking curbs. And that's sort of like a 40% weight on the curbs. Curbs are important, but not quite as important as the driving surface. So that's why there's a little bit of a blend there. We give an additional point if it's a major street, or if there's some kind of major base failure throughout the street. And then, as I mentioned, we combine the blocks for longer sections. Possible points are zero to 16. You'll never get a 16-street because you won't have an impassable major street with no curbs. So we start to get consideration when they get to about seven, depending on the street, or eight usually, once they get there, because there's a lot of different ways you can get to those points. Prepare a map and a forereport, which is available on the city's webpage. Council gets a hard copy of that. And then the highest rankings, usually seven plus. We asked Barry to look at his for needs, and then we start to formulate, gel around a program there. Federally eligible, eligibility sorted separately, that's the highest volume major streets, about 10% of our mileage. And then we have to line up those categories. Federal aid, other major, local, and then obviously Barry's projects have to hit water and wastewater. Some years, like for example, last year, we were a little bit worried because we had more money with the bond to play with than Barry had in his water fund reserve, so I had to pick a couple of streets that didn't rely on him having utilities having to go first. So some years, we're having to keep up with his projects, and we'll pretty much only do streets that are both, and this year's kind of one of those years. It's not always worst first. You've heard that term. Some of that is, if it's a concrete or asphalt street, you'll notice there's not any concrete streets on this year's program, and that's because we don't want to have a really small project and then pay exorbitant amounts of money for it. So we do try to combine those. In years, we might defer it or move a project ahead or back a year so we can get better contracts and get better unit pricing. As I mentioned, we delay projects where the utility funds are inaccurate or vice versa. Advance critical utility projects. There's some degree of geographic balance, although council members, we don't say one per precinct and call it good. We try to spread things around over a 10-year period. That's why your report actually includes a 10-year history in there. So you can see, we've been pretty balanced over 10 years. And then other logical factors. I mean, there's sometimes, there's reasons to do things. We've delayed projects because MDOT's doing a large job, or delayed some of our own projects because of the Winchester Street Bridge, for example. So with all that said, I'll blow through the projects pretty quickly. Our number one is our federal aid job for this year, and that's First Street Resurfacing, Harrison to Washington. We had wanted this to be a full rebuild, because as you can see in some of these, the very bad cracking, and there's some settlement in here. When we did the streetscape in 2001, we didn't have much funded for the resurfacing. We really just had to do an inch and a half mill and cap, but there's bricks not too far below that in some areas. And with the meandering curb that we had to do, we changed the profile a bit. So there's going to be areas that we do have to do base repair. A full rebuild in, with a concrete base and everything, taking all the original paving bricks out of there would have been like a $700,000 job. So in keeping with trying to scope this thing back a little bit, we didn't want to eat up so much of the street program in one project. So we are, we figured about 20% of the area for base repair in the worst areas, and then we're going to do a three-inch mill and resurfacing. So that's from Harrison to Washington. It may or may not include some work resetting the bricks in La Ranger Square. That's going to depend on how much money we have to play with in the federal allocation. We want to make sure not to leave federal funds on the table, but we also don't want to overspend. So there's a distribution of funding that's on your spreadsheets. I won't belabor that. The last paving was 2001, so even our, I'll say, our half-hearted milling and resurfacing in 2001 in conjunction with the streetscape, we're still past the 15-year mark that you usually see on asphalt projects, so. Our number two, which won't actually be constructed this year, but that's usually the following year's federal aid project, is West Front Street Resurfacing from Telegraph to Harrison, but because of the federal allocations we get, we're going to have to split that up into two years. So we'd go Telegraph to Rosler in 2019 and Rosler to Harrison in 2020, and that would be a three-inch mill and fill. There's some curbs, because we've got the low-profile curbs in a couple of blocks that just lack them. When it was still part of M50 and up till 2006, we were spending some state trunk line maintenance monies on putting those curbs in in anticipation of the next resurfacing. But council in 2006 voted to take that back from MDOT east of Telegraph, so that's ours now, and so it's our turn to pay for it. That was last resurfaced in '98. The rest of these you're going to see are a lot older than that. We get into the local streets from here. Number three is Maple. We're trying to finish Maple. We did, started Maple in 2005 at Elm, and we've been slowly working our way north. This is the west half of Maple, west of the right-of-way of ITC. Not a terribly high-volume road, but really awful conditions, and curbs are just shot in most areas. So last paving on the southerly two blocks was 1954, we believe, with, that was basically the first paving. And then in '96, they did an inch and a half mill and fill, didn't touch the curbs. So that is being coordinated with a water main replacement. Four and five are two of what we call the S-streets in the neighborhoods, all the streets aim to start with S. Stockton, and then number five is Sylvan. Those will both be three-inch mill and resurface, replacing all the curbs and drive approaches. The original paving was in concrete in 1930. It was resurfaced once since, but we don't have any plans on it, so we think they just did a quickie mill and fill with no plans. I've been here 20 years. I don't remember it being done. Barry's been here a few years longer than that. He doesn't remember it being done. We're pretty sure it's more than 30 years old on both of those, so. Both of these locations, we're coordinating with the water main. We're going to do a pipe burst project where we actually essentially drag a new line through the, through the old host pipe. So Stockton and Sylvan, basically Sylvan's the same thing. Number six is Parkwood Avenue. That runs between Hollywood and Maple. Again, not a terribly high-volume street, but pretty awful. That one appears to be last paved in 1949. We're coordinating that with a water main replacement, and actually, in this case, we're going to do a sanitary sewer replacement. I call it a bypass, but that's because we're going to be redirecting where the flow goes due to some depth and some grade issues. We're going to continue sewer one more block south on Arbor, and we're going to go that way, as opposed to going out east and west. So we're going to line the two outer blocks and replace, or I can't remember exactly, one outer block, and we're going to redirect from Riverview to Arbor and from Hollywood to Arbor, going into the new sewer, going north on- into the new sewer, going north on Arbor, so. Seven is Scottwood, and we didn't actually plan on Scottwood coming into this list, so you get a Google Earth image on that one, sorry. But it's still pretty awful. The curbs down, I tried to take pictures today, but it was still covered in snow. Curbs are actually worse than Parkwood, but the drive surface is better. So there's your, how you get, how do you get to eight plus points? Well, one of those two ways. Either you get a three on the curbs and a five on the surface, or you get a six on the pavement and a two on the curbs. So last paving, this one was resurfaced, looks like in 81, but they overlaid the curbs, which is why, once those curbs start rotting out, they get pretty bad. Number eight is the one we talked about, which is the biggie. We've been shipping away the last two years on Turnus Drive. We started with the worst of the worst at Telb Street. We did about 700 feet going north. Then this year, we flopped back and went from Dixie going south, past the Cracker Barrel driveway. That was about 1,000 feet. We spent half a million dollars getting that far. We've got all of Rose Street to do, all of, almost all of Telb, a block of Harbor, and then the remaining area on Turnus Drive, which is about 4,000 feet long, I think. So you just, it's big industrial roadways. All of them are 30-plus years old. I think we did an overlay on a section of Rose Street in maybe the early 90s, 92, something like that. But that was, again, just overlaying an inch and a half of asphalt over the concrete base, and that doesn't last. That doesn't normally last 26 years, let alone 10 or 15. So we're pretty much at 30 years on everything. We're looking at Special Assessment District options, because it's industrial frontage, but the problem is you've got, you've got businesses that would have assessments in the quarter-million-dollar range with some of the bigger ones, just because of their frontage on all these roads. So that's going to be a long process to get going, and I'm sure there will be some objections. So I think there's some recognition. We'll talk lots more about that as we go along. So there's $2 million right there. So unfortunately, there are federal grants, economic development-type grants for federally eligible roadways, and we did actually avail ourselves of that in 2012 with Detroit Avenue. We used our federal aid, matched it with a Category F grant to do Detroit Avenue, but that's the collector in the neighborhood, in the area. We can't, these aren't all collectors. They won't allow us, they only allow us a certain amount of mileage to be designated as collector, and these, it's too much mileage. So that's our dilemma, is trying to get outside funding for these. Okay, on to the infrastructure side, which for a number of reasons is sorted separately on your spreadsheets. Sidewalk program, we actually skipped a sidewalk program this past year because of all the roadway work we were doing. And in 2016, when we did a sidewalk program, we found that we're really getting to a wall here where we weren't spending, we weren't spending enough. We were spending too much for the little tiny driveway-type contractors, but not nearly enough for the big, big boys, if you will, that remain in the state. So we're, we're having trouble getting good unit pricing on a small program area. And as Mr. Pastu pointed out here, we should probably be spending about a quarter million dollars. We dialed it back a little bit. We're trying to get the remaining areas north of the river from Rosler all the way out to Munson Park done. We go through and do an assessment every year. We proactively mark areas. It used to be three-quarters of an inch, but we're finding that we just had too much that was getting grabbed there. We're allowed, we think legally, about two inches, based on some previous court action. We're going to stick with an inch, because we want to remain walkable and gives us a little fudge factor in there. So we're going to, we go through neighborhood, we proactively mark everything with one inch or greater vertical separation and/or general deterioration. Not just a single crack, but if you've got multiple cracks, or it's starting to just really fall apart. And then we do include any complaints, if residents call those in. Typically, the complaints we get are city trees. And unfortunately, that's what we're starting to see. We're on our fourth cycle now around the city, I think at least our fourth, since we did this in the 80s. And we're almost a victim of our own success, because most of the things that we can assess for have already been addressed. You obviously have frost that pops up year to year, but a lot of what you see is the city trees. And it's a price we pay for having those city trees, and we do try to cut the roots, come in with a root saw and knock those out of the way, but you're still seeing those continue to push up over a 10-, 12-year cycle. So that's why you've got such a high proportion of general fund. Number two, that's, this will be about the cheapest dollars you're ever going to get here, $1,250. That's because we only are responsible for paying 5% of our general aviation funds. So fortunately, that wouldn't even appear on your radar if it wasn't for the total cost. So that's just cracked ceiling and painting at the airport. This is a biggie that Mr. Pastu talked about, St. Mary's Gardens subdivision. Those of you that are, have been around a while, know that we have challenges, and St. Mary's Gardens is the Rosler lavender toll. There's different phases of it. They weren't all developed in order. So St. Mary's Gardens, number three, is what we're really talking about. I know we have Mr. Cochran that lives in that area. Mr. Cochran, do we have flooding issues in there? Do we have grading issues in there? Should that development have had four or five feet of fill put in before they built the homes? No, it should have. It should have, but it didn't. And the challenge there is basically Mason Run Drain is the outlet. So everything for about a quarter mile south to Hendricks or so is supposed to drain north to Mason Run, but if you look at where the land goes, it actually goes the reverse direction. So we've got a number of major challenges in there. We've held off on resurfacing John L. Drive, simply because we've got to solve the drainage issue. We did have a conceptual study done by the Spicer Group. This was a couple of years ago. We looked at the 10- and 25-year storm. They identified a range of options. We need to get into a little more hard and detailed design with the surveys that we've got done. My staff did start looking at a new storm line for McCormick. That was, we actually had a petition on that, because in the, we'll call it the, I don't want to say the great flood, but the five-inch-plus rain event in 2014, September 11th of 2014. We had a number of people, there was water in the streets, there was water in sanitary sewers, which is, in large part, you've got a lot of footer tiles that are still connected. They just don't have any place to put their stormwater, because in addition to not putting in the amount, correct amount of fill to cause the site to drain the correct way, they also didn't put in storm sewers unless it was necessary to drain the streets. So people don't have any place to put their sump pumps to. So you're basically just pumping water into the backyards, and it's coming back in the footer tile and going around. Some are tied in the sanitary. So bottom line, council is going to see a lot more work sessions on this, but we've put another $50,000 in for design. We're going to have a consultant look at all options up to it, including potentially a stormwater pump station, because that's the only way we're going to be able to get the depth that we need to really get the water out of these streets. But you have to pump it, once it gets down close to Mason Run, you'll have to pump it into the drain, because it just, it won't work otherwise. So that's going to be a big challenge. I won't belabor that any farther. Number four, which those of you that have been on Planning Commission for a while may notice, we haven't, we didn't used to put our equipment in this capital improvements program, but we are putting it in now. And these are funded through the Stores and Equipment Fund. We've got about $575,000 in total. That's 11 major pieces of something, equipment, rolling stock, heavy and light duty. Four police interceptors, we're trying to keep those. We pretty much have to buy four police vehicles every year to keep those under 100,000 miles. Two water department vans, because all of their light and medium-duty equipment is coming into the Stores and Equipment Fund. Their heavy equipment will retain ownership from them, but anytime they need something new, it's coming out of Stores and Equipment now. Two small tractors, one of those is for DPS, one of those is for parks. Two pickups, those are for the Parks Department. And we're, we've got money in for one large item, and that had been the street sweeper, because these are the two older ones. This one is a 2003, I want to say. Now, that's pretty old for a street sweeper, because they take quite a bit of abuse. We do have a new 2016 Global, which is the main unit we use on the street, but during leaf season, we need something else. This yellow Pelican was a donation from Ford Motor Company when they closed their doors and distributed their equipment to, on a donation purpose, to some of us that could use it. So these are our two that we, we have, actually have two of these white units, one of which we just scavenge for parts. So we were kind of hoping to get a street sweeper, but we do have two tandem axle dump trucks that were red-tagged last winter, and we're trying to look at replacement on those. One was funded already this past year. So we're looking at a lot, a lot of different options for that, including what we call a swap loader, where you would actually have just one chassis and a number of different box attachments. You'd have your dump body, you'd have potentially a Vector unit even, which we've got our, we've got challenges with our Vector right now as well. And we were even hoping for like a leaf vacuum type thing. So we're trying to promote as much flexibility as we can, but we're starting to run out of time on these. And right behind it is our 2001 Workhorses, our Sterling Dump Trucks. Those are the ones you see out right now, plowing and salting. Those are our new units. So you're going to see these, this type of number request coming through here every year. The challenge, of course, is funding them. They are funded from rental rates, from other departments, and ourselves when we use them. So we may consider doing something with those salt trucks. We've got some rehab options on the table. So I've got the sweeper in there, but we may decide to punt and go somewhere else. Keep it rolling, I know. And then our last one, which is, I'm almost embarrassed to put on capital improvements, is a $12,000 request for, to replace the roof on the salt barn, which is built in 1999. So that one's due. Our DPS crew's going to do most of the work, but we need the materials, so. That's what I got. Are there any questions on my projects? I promised I'd go as faster than I really did. Sorry. Nothing? Okay. I'll turn it over to Mr. Leroy, our Utilities Director.
I'll ask you later about it. Okay. I'll do your own thing.
All right. Good evening, everybody. All right, so I'll blow through my projects real quick. I'll hit wastewater first and then water. And wastewater, we have four projects totaling $875,000. I'll touch on every one of the projects. In water, we have eight total projects, about $1.84 million. The criteria is listed up there. You'll see a lot of the same theme, coordination, age, asset management, ranking, et cetera. They all do meet the comprehensive plan requirements, and they're all self-funded with our rate structure. The first project from wastewater is our lift station truck. The request is for $125,000. It's got over 127,000 miles. This truck maintains a 73-square-mile service area, over 30, has 36 pump stations that it's maintaining. It carries equipment out, it's used for pulling pumps, et cetera. It's been repaired numerous times. We've had it at the shop quite a bit lately with transmission and motor problems. Our second-ranked project is our sanitary sewer replacement rehabilitation program. It's a half million dollars on seven project locations, about 4,700 lineal feet. The age varies right now from 1906 through 1949, the current age of it. The goal of it is to remove inflow infiltration, root intrusion, improve the hydraulics is the key. That's what Patrick alluded to on the Scottwood project. These are all coordinated with the street projects as well. The third-ranked project is the Detroit Beach Bar Screen. This is our second-largest station in the entire system. Over here on this side, there's a flap gate that pops up, and it's a manual bar screen in there. What that means is the sewage flows through it and collects the large objects, and it has to be manually raked out. It's over 20 feet down to it. It's a safety hazard, so we're trying to improve the safety and upgrade it. So we'll put an inline grinder, like we have in other parts of the system, that will help break the sewage down, so we can pump it and move it downstream for treatment. It's $100,000. And again, the goal is to improve the efficiency and safety. And the last wastewater project is our motor control center replacement. This is in our sludge handling bay, and it has a lighting panel with it. It's over 25 years old. It's in really bad condition. It's in a hydrogen sulfide-type environment, and it erodes pretty much everything. So a lot of maintenance with us right now. So we're looking at replacing it and improving the different type of rating of the outside cabinets and all the components with it. So moving on to water distribution, the total request is $1.289 million, a little more than that, in six locations. These are coordinated with street projects. About 5,800 lineal feet of pipe will be replaced. We will replace all lead service lines. As Mr. Pastu alluded to, we're waiting for some legislation, regulatory action, I should say, that is likely to occur later this year that may change that dynamic a little bit. But we'll see. Currently, we are replacing all lead service lines with the project, all the way up to the meter. These will improve the integrity, as well as reliability of the system, and improve the fire flow characteristics. Our second-ranked distribution project is our dump truck replacement. It's $95,000. The current age of it's a 2005 unit. It has had several rehabilitation projects on the dump truck portion bed itself, as well as a motor problem. So we're looking at upgrading this. We have 117 square-mile service area that we use two different dump trucks for. Our third-ranked project for distribution is our backhoe replacement. This backhoe over here is a 1999 unit, and this is a 1991 Hilo. We're looking at trading those in and getting a used unit, something like this that's over on the right. And it'll have forks on it, so we'll be able to offload supplies and materials, as well as load stone and things like that. So our, we'll improve the efficiency and storage at the water plant, where we store our equipment and still meet the needs. So moving over to the filtration division, our first project is our turbidimeter replacement. These are used for water clarity, so you can see through the water. These are required by the MDQ, we're required to have continuous operation of this 24 hours a day. The units to the left are the existing units. They don't make them anymore, so we have to upgrade. We can't buy parts, can't buy units anymore. So we have to upgrade to the newer units. We're currently looking at two models, and it's a $55,000 request. And again, this is a regulatory requirement to have this. Our second-ranked project is more of a heavy maintenance. We're looking at painting, repainting our pipe gallery, and it's in the basement of the water plant. This is where basically the bowels of the system, where it's moving water back and forth and between different treatment processes. And these were last fully replanted in 1993, so we want to extend the service life, and it's a multi-year funded project as well. Our third-ranked project is our pumps, motors, and drives rehabilitation, as well as some exterior piping. These are, a lot of the pumps and motors are over 30 to 50 years old, and some of the piping's over 90 years old. It's original when the plant was built. So we're looking at improving the integrity, as well as lowering some of our electrical costs where it makes sense, putting in different, more efficient drives and motors with that. And then moving on to the raw water side, this is our raw water partnership, where Frenchtown and the city both co-own this facility. 1826 of it is owned by the city, and 826 is Frenchtown. This is a, this is the last request for this, it's been a multi-year funded project, I think, since Ed Sel's been working with the City of Monroe. It's been a long time. But this will install our second-large pump, will be able to be rated for 18 million gallons a day, which matches the water plant treatment capacity. One pump is currently in service, and will improve the reliability and redundancy of the system by having that. And then the last project is our, the 1948 section of our raw water facility at the, at the site. This will be a multi-year funded project. Some of these pumps and motors are between 35 and 70 years old. Some of the pumps have lost their pumping capacity, and they're not very efficient, not very efficient, and they, we're looking at improving the efficiency of that. So, with that, is there any questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Going back to the start here, if there is any questions, I thought I might have heard one that somebody wanted to pay for Patrick.
I'd save mine for Patrick afterwards.
Okay, okay. What we want to impart on you is that, you know, we are kind of at a critical juncture out there. We've got a lot of projects planned for the next several years, and probably more, once we get more regulatory guidance and finish up the downtown master plan. So, Jeff's going to talk about the next steps, because this is only the first step in the process. There are others to come forward. Jeff?
And if you promise to give me your money, I won't show you any projects. As you can see, what I talked a little bit about earlier, was that we started a little early in the year for the CIP budget, a little earlier than normal, and that was in September. Typically, we start in about October, and start getting the applications, the requests out. And again, while we have a little bit of flexibility on that side, a little bit of latitude about when we start, we could start earlier in the year even, and start going through this project and the process. But once we hit into the new year, every year, then we start hitting into dates certain. Typically, that means that this joint session has to occur in January. And at some point in January, the Planning Commission has to approve, or recommend approval, or denial, or approval with revisions, some sort of motion along those lines, and recommendation back to the city council. That has to be done by the 1st of February. And then, council has to approve the capital improvements program budget for the upcoming fiscal year by the end of February. Now, typically, that takes place at the second meeting of this council during February, because it requires a public hearing, and it requires a number of things that go into that. So, again, while we have a lot of latitude and a lot of flexibility at the end of the year, when we hit into the new year, is when we do hit those dates. So, that's really where we're at at this point in time. The Planning Commission has a meeting following this, as soon as we conclude here. They will be talking a little bit more about the CIP budget, and they will either be making a decision a little bit later tonight, or we will be setting a special meeting for later this month. And again, the requirement for the Planning Commission is to get a recommendation back to city council by the end of January, so that they have it by February 1st, and then, it goes to the citizens' council. So, again, it is a long process. I think you can see by all the work that Mr. Lewis and Mr. Leroy put into their projects, and the coordination and the scheduling, and all the things that administration and staff do to get us to this point, is really time-consuming. It takes a lot of work to make this thing happen, which is the CIP. And every year, we accomplish it, and every year, we get projects funded, and every year, we start on them as soon as the new fiscal year starts. But up until that point, it takes all of these things going. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions related to process, and I'm sure Mr. Pastu might have some concluding comments, or answer questions as well.
You know, I think, well, Jeff was, you know, mentioning the work of others, both Jeff, Matt Wallace in his office, the planner too, and Tammy, I don't know, I've seen a lot of her handling documents, making sure they're correct. But it is a big team effort, and certainly greatly appreciate their time in coordinating this effort. And again, you know, if you need us back, if you hold a special meeting, you know, we'd be more than happy to come back if you have other questions to talk about, any items that we have proposed in the upcoming capital improvements program. So, with that, I don't know if there's any last questions. If not, how do we adjourn this work session?
We just adjourn.
Okay.
Call the comments, we'll adjourn the work session. Thank you all for being here.
Last, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. We will have this, we'll give you a link if you want to go through this. I think a lot of the projects are really well laid out with the single slides that they had. So, if you have questions, they'll be available for you. We'll send you a link. So, all right. Now, I'm ready. Thank you, Mayor.
We're done. We're closed. Thank you.
Thanks.